Go to the floor.
Sure. You guys get all right. We'll call meeting to order. Please, starting from the top of the region. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for its stand, one nation under one law, with liberty and justice for all. Anyone recording meeting for this couple of minutes? Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Boyd.
Mrs. Lorenzen.
Here.
Mr. Hershey.
Here.
Mrs. Kitten.
Yeah.
Mrs. McIlroy. Mrs. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Podiger. Mr. Rechner.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Waxler.
Here.
Eight attendants. Seven attendants, sorry.
Thank you. Welcome to our visitor. Announcements of the upcoming meetings. November 8 at 5:30 this Wednesday. There's a financing facilities workshop. November 13 at 6, a school board meeting. December 4 at 6, school board reorganization meeting. And an executive session will be held following tonight's meeting for legal items. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we will approve the minutes. I just recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following minutes of October 10, 2023. Committee of the whole meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? We could do this by voice vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Moving on to board liaison updates. Curriculum has this Waxler.
I have an update.
Thank you. Facilities, Mrs. Phillips.
Thank you. Just like you stated, our next meeting is this Wednesday at 5:30 here in Ms.
Great. And finance, we'll catch Mr. Podiger another time. Moving to Dr. Woodard for assessment data review. All right.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Just so everybody is aware, this is going to be the initial data overview for this school year. But I'm going to come back multiple times throughout the year and continue to talk about data. As you know, I never had a loss for words when it comes to data and presenting. And so I thought, rather than throwing everything at once to you, we would kind of break it up. And it does help because, believe it or not, the information from last year's state assessments, we have received our own scores and results. However, the state has not publicly published their results yet. And so on that future ready index site that they maintain, none of it has been updated. I just participated in a meeting today, virtually, and there is still no official date as to when all of that will be released soon. So my guess is by Thanksgiving. But that allows us to do more comparisons against state averages. We don't know those yet. Against other districts of similar size and also the county. So at this point in time, what I wanted to do is really just kind of provide to you an overview of, you know, our comprehensive and strategic plan academic focus areas, which really, you've heard me say a lot, is in all around math instruction, math achievement. So I wanted to share a little bit of updates as to what we're doing. What we're in the process of doing now and how that kind of connects to, obviously, hopefully increased achievement. I want to share a little bit with our recent PSSA and Keystone data. So again, what, how did we fare? It's kind of hard, though, for you, I know, because we don't have the context of, you know, against state averages and such. But just so you can get a little bit of knowledge as far as those achievement scores. And then, one thing that I don't usually spend a lot of time on, and I think many of you are interested, is just a glimpse into our advanced placement data, our AP data at the high school level. So I wanted to share some of that information, again, from the 2023 administration spring. So that's, again, kind of that bird's eye view of data today. And as we go farther into the year, I'll be able to bring you more about the data that we collect and administer on a regular basis here in our district as well. But as of right now, we do a lot of district assessment data in the fall, in the winter, and in the spring. And so we have baseline data, but again, that doesn't tell you too much. You want to make sure you compare it and watch trends and such. So I'll come to you later winter, early spring with some of that updated information so we can see how students are progressing through the years. So if we would like to take a little bit about that, look at the strategic and comprehensive plan. And so that big targeted goal was that we are going to demonstrate improvement in student growth and achievement, specifically in all areas. But we really wanted to focus in that because of some of our results that haven't been where we really wanted them to be. And if you recall, the comp plan, the strategic plan, those goals are in alignment with one another. We're really shooting to increase achievement of what equates to about 15% over three years. And so we know it's not going to happen overnight. Many of these action steps that we're putting into place take a little time to actually develop into positive results. But I think you'll see that, for the most part, we had some gains that I think are are going in the right direction for us, specifically in math from this past year. But it's that chunking out over the three-year period. And again, test results, tests aren't going to just get better without doing some more work in the classroom. And I think that's the piece where we purchased those new resources. Again, it's not just the resource, it's about the instructional practices, too. And it's really putting all of that together into our curriculum documentation. And so we are working with our K to 7 math teachers and we are revising and really rewriting our curriculum documents. We started that this summer and we continue to meet and work throughout the school year. And we're making a great headway. So our target is to be completed with our math documentation, our curriculum documentation by March of this year officially. And so that, again, we're getting, we're getting to that point. It's been a great opportunity for our grade level teachers to work kind of cohesively across different grade levels as well. And some good discussion that's happening. In addition, I think one thing I wanted to bring up just as a reminder, we did something a little different this year with our fourth grade teachers, departmentalized them. So instead of being completely self-contained, one teacher all day long, teaching all the subject areas, we found that, you know, we've been talking about this for a while now, why not try to figure out how to departmentalize a little bit? Get students a little bit more prepared for the change of classes at West Reading and then obviously onward up to the junior, senior high school. But it still gives them that community-strong classroom feel and connection. And so we have our teachers, three of whom are teaching math and science, and the other three are teaching English Language Arts and Social Studies. And it's going very, very well this year. The people who are teaching math and science really feel like they're getting a strong handle on the math expectations for our students. And it'll be really good because down the road with our new science standards coming down the pike, that helps them really feel solid with that as well. And our ELA teachers are getting a chance to really integrate more of our small group instructional practices. Really, that's happening in math as well, which is a key professional development target area, is to really help our teachers figure out how to use data to inform their daily teaching, their daily practice. So I said an increase in data-driven practices. We've been doing a lot of work with iXL, iXL Diagnostics, helping our teachers understand how to grab this real-time data and use it instructionally. Our teachers really, really have liked all of the innovations in that system. And we've used our coaches to go out and get more professional learning, to turn around and work with our teachers side by side and in small groups and in grade levels. So you can't, you can't really create effective small groups unless you have the data that shows you how to do it. And that's what we're really trying to clue teachers in on how to use that appropriately and effectively. So that's quite a part of our plan this year as well. So there's that professional learning, small group instructional practices. Here at the junior, senior high, we're going to dive in on Friday to some iXL with our English and math teachers as well, because that's a K to 12 tool. But in addition, our math department has been reading Building Thinking classrooms, which is all about effective math, effective teaching practices, quite frankly, but it's geared and centered in math, which it's very rare you find a book that's geared just for math teachers. And that's really going, going along very well. I can go into math classrooms upstairs and I start to see vertical, non-permanent surfaces, kids working with others, getting out of that rows and columns and having more discussion about math. And that, research says, tends to lead to increased achievement. So we're starting to really take some of these strategies and practices that we're learning about and putting them in place. So that's been very helpful. In addition to that, I know that we've talked a lot about the increase and the need for increased math minutes in our instructional plan here at the junior, senior high school. When you really take a look at that middle level, we have one of the fewest amount of minutes of math instruction in the county, if not the fewest, in sixth, seventh, well, I should say, seventh and eighth grade specifically. And so I'm working right now with building administrators as well as some teachers to start to think about how we can create at least an intermediate plan for next year to increase our middle-level math instruction minutes, okay, our instructional time. That said, Mr. Savory and I are working to try to engage with some of the third-party consultant firms out there to really maybe bring them in to help us look at an in-depth schedule revision completely at the junior, senior high school. That's a longer-term commitment. I didn't want to wait to change the amount of minutes of math instruction for something bigger. So we're trying to make it kind of an intermediate step and then potentially larger. And obviously, that would be conversations with the board as we go through that potential process there. So.
Can you help us, sorry, can you help us understand what kind of time you might be thinking about without holding you to anything?
Sure. Well, I'd love to talk more about that in January. Okay. Program of studies.
As long as I'm going to hear about it sometime.
Yeah, that's okay. And that's the piece where, this is really kind of that bird's eye view, but in January, we're going to come back to program of studies discussion with the new courses we'd like to offer, and I thought that would go very hand in hand. I say that because right now we're working with a small group of administrators and teachers, so I want to make sure we firm up everything before we go public, if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, I just think if in January or whenever you come back.
Yeah, yeah.
It would help me to understand what we're putting off. Like, would you like to have 90 minutes and we're only going 37, you know, like?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So we will go more in depth in that at our next data meeting, the program of studies. All right. So I think that kind of sets the tone for where we are going with our data. Again, bird's eye view, really taking a look at initially the grade level overview. So comparing third grade from 2021 to 2022 to 2023. So, Mr. Arns, if you could take a look, we have a three-year chart here. So we're looking at third grade. And this, by the way, just so everybody's aware, this is percent proficient, which means proficient and advanced altogether, okay? So the percent proficient, if you take a look at grade three, that light blue represents the 2021 administration. There were 69% proficient in third grade English Language Arts. We dropped down in 21, 22 to 56% proficient. We went back up in 22, 23. So last year was 22, 23. That's the most recent data we have. It's in that purple color, all right? I have here the three-year percent proficient scores, results, just for sake of comparison. Again, what you don't see is where the state average is for 22, 23, because I don't know it yet. Should know it in the next three to four weeks. But I can share with you a little bit about where these scores are. So if you take a look at grade three, by the way, you saw left is ELA. That middle section is math. We do offer that fourth grade science administration. Science has been very, very similar. You know, I hate to use the word stagnant, because stagnant sometimes has a negative connotation to it. It hasn't really gone up or down too much at all over those three years. Expect that to change tremendously in 25, 26, when everything changes in science with instruction and assessment, K to eight. So I kind of leave that off to the side, because there's not a lot of innovation happening this moment, except the fact that we're professionally developing our teachers on what the new standards are going to look like, all right?
Yeah, I just have a question. Are these the same kids?
So I thought you'd ask that. Okay. So these are not the same kids. So this is looking at in 2021, in blue, that's third grade, okay? In 21, 22, it's a whole nother batch of third graders, but it's third grade programmatically.
But the fourth grade?
You could actually make that connection if you go 21, 22, as third grade ELA is 56% proficient. If you go to fourth grade ELA in 22, 23, that's the same group.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And just so you're aware, that is something, that's another deeper dive I would like to do with you in January, is follow cohorts through. I think it will be helpful if we follow cohorts through the longer term, when you know the averages of each grade level. I say that because, you know, primarily, and historically, seventh and eighth grade have been lower scores than third, fourth grade. And so if you see a detrend, you know, like a decrease trend, that can tell a bit of the story, but you have to know what you're comparing it to statewide as well. So what we thought we would show you today is the third grade programmatically against third grade, against third grade, fourth grade against itself over the past couple of years, and really post-COVID, quite frankly, okay? And you can see, you know, it's a little bit all over the place, but one thing that I think is very handy, so if I should say, grade three math. If you take a look at that purple where it says 62% proficient, just for, oh, I'm sorry. Let me go there. Sorry, go back to the green. Green, grade three math, 21, 22. The green bar, which is 57% proficient, just for sake of comparison, because I could get a state average on that, because it's older. State average is 47% that year, okay? So we were 10% ahead of the state average that, with that assessment proficiency. If you would take a look at the grade three ELA in 21, 22, that's the green bar, 56% proficient in advance. The state average then was 52.3%. So that, a lot of that, 21, 22, that's before we really started making significant changes on top of coming back from COVID. Yeah, yeah, you know. So I think what, like I said earlier, it's going to take some time for a lot of this to work itself out. I don't want to be.
But when you see, when you see the grades traveling, they're increasing a little bit. So that's a positive thing.
The majority are right here. Yes, you're right. You know, again, when you get to some of the numbers in junior high, where the state averages aren't that high and we're not that high, then all of a sudden it might look like it goes down. So, but yeah, if you actually follow the blue to the green to the purple or something, you know, you'll see that hopefully we're on the right upswing.
Are we going to see fifth and sixth? Like, how do they fare this year?
Yeah. I think that's next.
Mr. Arns?
Yeah, there you go. Okay, here you go. So, Mr. Arns, you're hicking me on track, Mrs. Waxler, that's right. When you take a look at fifth grade, I got my cheat sheet here so I can see. If you're going to look at fifth grade ELA, 21, 22, that's the green bar again, you're going to see that that is 70% proficiency. State average was 53.6% proficiency, all right? So we fell down a tad in the 22, 23, but we're actually doing pretty well. And I look at what's six, let me see if I can say this, what is statistically significant? Statistically significant, you know, a couple percent here and there. I like to recognize and celebrate when we go 2% up, but then when I say it's 2% down, I'm like, is that really statistically significant? That's how we play this game. Exactly. So, you know, there's, I think overall, again, you have to look at a trend line, too. The key is, you know, 1% or 2% from one year to the next might not make that much of a difference, but are you traditionally going up or not? Now, that said, you'll see in sixth grade, we're going down a little bit. So we've got to kind of reframe that a little. The sixth grade, just so you're aware, 21, 22, so that green bar, the sixth grade state proficiency for advanced, for proficient and advanced is 56.1%. So again, we're definitely higher, but to me, I wouldn't be satisfied if we were just at the state average. Like, we want to be higher than the state average by far, so we want to continue that upswing. If you're looking at math on the right side, the 21, 22 grade five math state average is 35%. So right there, we were right there, okay? However, the one, I have to point this out, and I have to give credit to our fifth grade math teachers, I, in my lifetime, have never seen a 20% increase in proficiency from one year to the next. And if you take a look at that, I know it's a different group of kids, but they, it's impressive. Fifth grade has traditionally been a challenging year for scores across the state. And to be 56% proficient last school year, 22, 23, from what had been a 36% the year before, and a 46% the year before that, so even 10%, you know, trending up from two years prior, is incredible. That's growth that I don't expect overnight. But, you know, when talking to the fifth grade math teachers, they obviously had a new resource. They also did a lot more problem solving. They also did a lot more student talking, less teacher talking. They, you know, and interestingly, they grouped within their own classes. They did not spend the time transitioning to flexible group across. And when you do that, and you're already pressed for time, and you're losing five or six minutes instructionally a day to go back and forth, I said, for what purpose? And, because we talked about it, because they said, we didn't flex group last year. And I said, do you think we should next year? I said, oh, I mean, this year. I said, um, did you see your scores? Do you think you need to? I said, if there's one outlier student hanging out in the other classroom, bring him over if you're pulling a group. But why would you, just for the sake of transitioning, transition? Because we're losing time. And, you know, five or six minutes may or may not seem like a lot, but when you add it five days a week, that's a half hour of instruction, you know? So we really have to be cognizant to how we're spending our time in the classroom with our kids and making sure that it's effective and efficient. So, you know, I have to publicly say, kudos to fifth grade. That was incredible. And they're looking to, they want to replicate that and continue to improve that, you know? So, and I see in sixth grade, you know, we were higher than the previous, than the fifth grade prior, but we still improved five percentage points from, you know, the sixth grade group the year before to the sixth grade group this year. So I think there's, a lot of growth there occurred, where sometimes it's really hard to get growth, I think I would say that. You know, where it's hard to get decent achievement. So I'll be very curious, and I can't wait to find out, what is the state average for fifth grade math this past year? Because did everybody see that much of an upswing? Or, you know, was it some of the different things that we were doing? So that'll be something that I want to.
Did you tell us the state averages for math?
For sixth, um, fifth grade math was that 35%. So we were right there at 21, 22. And in sixth grade math, it was 32%. So we were considerably ahead in sixth grade math in 21, 22. We were right on practically in fifth grade math in 21, 22.
Why has been different math in sixth grade, even across the state?
You're going to see it even more in the next screen with the same question.
You will. I mean, I can remember when I was a building principal at both of the buildings, fifth grade was like, I mean, it was always lower than sixth grade, but it was always lower than fourth grade. Like, it was, people will say that it's just a lot of content that gets hit into fifth grade for some reason. But that's why I'm curious to see if the trend at the state level increased. And if it increased, maybe it didn't increase that much, but how much did it increase? And why is that? Or if it didn't, okay, what are we doing? We're going to keep doing what we're doing. But, you know, fifth grade is a loaded bear for content, for concepts, and for application and problem solving. It's really, it's, you know, it just takes it up to the next level. So sometimes when we, when we want our students to succeed, we don't necessarily help them engage in productive struggle, because we want them to succeed. I keep telling the teachers, it's in their best benefit to engage in productive struggle. They have to. Like, if we're doing it all for them, we're not there to take the test for them. And so how can we balance being supportive, offering feedback, but yet having students engage in productive struggle? And I think that's what we're trying to do more of now, making sure that kids are, and maybe they're doing it collaboratively with other students, maybe they're doing it, you know, a little bit independently, with a teacher checking in on them. But the key piece is that we're not going to simply give you the answer. We're going to rephrase the question and we're going to say, you know, we're not letting you go until you figure this out. And that's hard. And teachers will say, we just said our professional development last week. I said to me, Missy, it's a whole lot easier getting the answer. But it is, but what is that teaching them? Like, let them engage in productive struggle. And so I think maybe we're doing a little bit more of that than we were before. And that's, that's a challenge, especially for all of our awesome people who just want to do what, yeah, 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 you know, who, who don't, who don't like to see their kids, you know, ah, struggling. So I think that's the piece where we just have to restructure our classrooms to make sure that they engage in that. So if you take a look, without productive struggle, we have seventh grade and eighth grade, right? So we, here we go. So when you take a look at the three years, 21, 22, and 23, seventh grade ELA, again, what did I say? There were some minute increases, so it's relatively stable, but at least going in the right direction. Eighth grade ELA is all over the place. Just for sake of comparison, eighth grade ELA, 21, 22, that green bar, state average was 49%. So just below 50%. We were at 55. I'm sorry, I'm trying to do it again, sorry. Grade eight ELA, state average 55%. We actually were only at 49%, so we were a little below the state average in ELA there. And we only came up just a little bit in 22, 23. So I'm not sure what's going to happen when we see the state averages for that. You take a look at seventh and eighth grade in math, you see the trends going up, but you're still in, you know, 25% proficiency this past year in eighth grade math, 21% the year before. State averages are right around where we are. Seventh grade math in 21, 22 is 27%. We were 28%. State averages in eighth grade math, 22, 22 was 22%. We were 21%. So we're hanging right there at that average, which isn't something to celebrate, in my opinion. It's something that we need to continue to work on. And that's where I say, I don't always say that more time gets you better results. However, I do believe that we are not spending enough time in math instruction, particularly in seventh and eighth grade, when we have 41 minutes a period, you know, a day, and other schools have 60 minutes a day. And again, 20 minutes every day adds up to several different classes in an extra week. And so we are looking to do, you know, to do something. And it might not be like, you know, like you were referring to, Mr. Trent, it might not be 100% of what we want, but if we can get there and chip off an extra few classes a week, you know, extra time every week, I think it will be a start. I don't think we can sit here at 41 minutes a day and just, just wait and hope something else drastic happens positively. I don't think it will.
Were we discussing something else about eighth grade math? I feel like I remember.
So in addition to. So, in addition to the change, yep, in addition to the change in increase in math minutes, all right, that we're gonna propose, um, the other change is, right now, okay, those three grade levels, the 21, 22, 23 blocks, the, the majority of those kids during those years took the eighth grade PSSA, and they also took the Algebra I Keystone. We have the majority of kids taking Algebra I in eighth grade. So, they also were not focused solely on the eighth grade standards. They were focused on the Algebra I standards, which some people would say, "Some of that's included in eighth grade math." Yes, but it's not, I mean, there were definitely standards that weren't hit, because the focus was on Algebra I. It's, it's a graduation requirement, the Keystone. So, we have no intention of changing anything for the kids who are accelerated, alrighty? But, Miss, again, I'll go more into detail from January. But the plan for next school year is the majority of students, that majority meaning the kids not in accelerated, are not gonna get pushed to Algebra I in eighth grade. They're going to wait for Algebra I till ninth grade. It is a high school level course. Um, more and more districts have done this and are doing this. Um, kids just aren't ready developmentally for the Algebra I concepts on top of the eighth grade expectations, the same year, with limited time, right? So, it's just like we have everything kind of stacked up against us in some cases. And so, what is it that we need to deal with? And we met with the math teachers, they are on board. Um, we just, we're gonna make sure that it happens. It's gonna be in the program of studies. We have the draft going right now with the name changes of our courses. Um, and, and those kids who can handle it, who've been successful in accelerated, will not change anything. Like, they will still be on track to go as far as they want. But I don't think 80% of our kids are ready for Algebra I in eighth grade. 25% might be, that's fine, but not 80% of our kids. And so, between increased time and also a larger focus on pre-algebra and algebraic concepts in eighth grade, and then Algebra I in ninth grade, I think we're gonna come out stronger ahead. And, um, so that, that is the plan. Um, we couldn't make it happen for this year, but it is in, obviously, our action plan to make it happen for, for the 24, um, 25 school year, okay? Um, so I think that's a piece where, you know, I, it, it's one thing to show you all these charts and graphs and numbers, it's another thing to say, "What are we doing about it?" And I think that's a piece where we've been really working, discussing, and collaborating, and brainstorming about ways we can address this. Um, and we're, so we're not gonna sit idle and just continue to watch this. So, and we're post-pandemic, and, and I've said this before, you know, the pandemic has been passed, so we have to move forward. Um, but research shows that the kids who were stuck in third, fourth, fifth grade in the pandemic in math are having a harder time overcoming that. The kids who are a little bit younger in ELA, you know, are having a harder time overcoming that. That's just what the research is showing, what the statistics are showing us. But, so we have to figure out additional and more ways, you know, to, to get to, to them. So, that's the plan. You know, go ahead.
I was just curious, what's happening in grades nine through 12 in math? Like, do you see a decrease in number of kids who are taking, um, whatever it is, who took the, the, the advanced math? Do you know what I mean? Like, are there less kids? I, I mean, this has been an ongoing issue. It's always the bell system, it just doesn't work the bell system, but it needs to start working.
Yeah, so, I don't have the numbers in front of me for the enrollments, and I can check that out. I mean, I think we've always had a rough number of kids who get to AP Calc BC. I don't think that's really chipped, uh, to blow very much. I think that's been pretty steady, you know, stable. Um, I, I guess the, the question for me would be more like, you know, maybe not those top, top kids, but how many other kids are getting to honors calculus? Like, you, you know what I mean? That, to me, I think is the question I need to look at.
And what percentage of those kids are accelerated? So, if you take out, if you have 10% of the kids who are accelerated, you're literally saying 11% of our kids who are not accelerated are only proficient.
Yeah, I, I think that number is fairly accurate there. I mean, not many of our students who are proficient are outside of the accelerated class right now. Right? And they're going to Algebra I, and then they're going to Algebra II. Um, but then, you know, what, where are they going after that? If, you know, um, and again, not everybody needs calculus. I'm, I'm gonna be the first one to say, not everyone needs calculus in high school. Um, but I want them to be engaged in math that's going to help them outside of here when they leave. Um, you know, and that's why I think, um, an academic statistics class is excellent for some kids. Um, an honor statistics class is excellent for some kids. A financial receipt class is excellent for some kids. And that's coming our way for next year. We got into program study. Um, yet, you know, so like, there are, there are some courses here that I think we have to realize, I want them to be functional so that they can be, you know, successful after they leave here. But I, I can check, and I can certainly talk to Dr. Jones. But I'd be curious, because I don't think the Calc AB and the Calc BC numbers have changed much. But I would think it's probably those couple of levels below where we might some, see some work kids going divergently to other math classes. And there are only three maths required. Now, there've been three maths for a while, but there are a lot of kids who don't take math this senior year, you, you know, and so that can also contribute to...
But I think what you've explained to us in the past, if I remember correctly, is we don't have many objective assessments of math in, once you get beyond the eighth grade. Um, and so, we don't really have a way. And it's scary to me, because we see kids that are, three quarters aren't proficient in seventh and eighth grade, and we don't really have a way to track whether they have catched up.
Well, you can look at the number as it's taking the class now versus six years ago, versus 10 years ago.
But you don't know how they're doing. And you can't look at, you know, just because they're taking the class doesn't mean that they have... That's why...
Yeah, and then you also have the way the grades are. Like, that's what these, you know, is it just kids who do homework, and that's why they're getting lower grades? Or is it, you know, do they know the content? I mean, there is a whole other piece there. Our SAT scores haven't gone down, like, they're pretty stable. Um, and that's really based on a lot of Algebra II and, you know, a little bit of geometry. You know, so our, our kids seem to be hanging on there. Um, but, yeah, I, I mean, it does, it's worrisome. You, you know, it's absolutely worrisome when, when you see numbers like that. But, again, and, you know, part of me says, well, it's the way it is everywhere, the state average, but that's worrisome, you know? And that's worrisome for manufacturers and, 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 you know, people who want to hire our kids. They need to know math. I mean, I talked to, we talked to, um, Dr. Soffler at ECTC, Precision Machining. Like, that is fine, like, that is detailed math these kids have to do. It's not calculus, but it's computational math. They have to be successful, or they will not be able to be successful in that program. So...
Thank you, Mrs. Jones.
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
I had a couple different thoughts, and I'm just gonna remember them all. Okay, so, ELA, do those scores get broken down between reading and writing?
No. Um, it used two years ago when we had the PSSA, ELA, and, um, PSSA test, English and, and writing, but not anymore. Now that it's called English Language Arts, it goes all into one. Now, that said, that's one overall score. We can break it down into different domains, and that's what we do with our teachers. Like, okay, we're a little weak in informational text versus, um, you know, fictional text. Or, we're a little weak in our text-dependent analysis, our writing, versus, um, something else. But we're weak in our short answer, open-ended answers. So, we work with all of our teachers on honing in on some areas that we may need to focus instructionally to help our whole grade go up. Um, but it doesn't come out differently with the state. It's all kind of, you know, bunched into the one ELA score, okay?
And then math, two thoughts. Um, seventh grade, prior to seventh grade, most math is various concepts. So, you'll do a unit on fractions, you'll do a unit on multiplying fractions. Then you get to seventh, at least when I was in school, seventh grade going onward, it was one topic for the entire year. So, like, pre-algebra, Algebra I, Algebra II, geometry, et cetera. So, I'm wondering if that may be part of the reason some of our math scores dip in grade seven and eight? Because if we're requiring students to take algebra, some students don't do well in algebra, but they do well in other concepts, but those aren't part of the course anymore.
So, um, that's an interesting thought. I, I would say, like, when, when a parent gets a report from PSSA eighth grade, that math score is still divvied up into standards that are algebraic concepts or geometry. So, there's still standards that are, um, get numbers and operations, you know, embedded in that eighth grade math. So, even though it's more of a pre-algebra, it still has measurement, time, and data. So, you're still weaving that in there. So, that's, there are still standards that are a part of that math, if that makes sense.
I know there's standards that are part of it, but is that what we're teaching?
Yeah.
Because if we're looking at the algebra keystone, is there more focus on algebra? Do you know what I mean?
So, you're, and that's the whole issue with eighth grade having Algebra I and eighth grade standard at the same time. Because we're focusing more heavily on the algebra part rather than the other eighth grade math standards that would weave in geometry, measurement, time, and data, and all of that. If we split that up and say, for most, most of you, Algebra I's gonna be in ninth grade, focusing on Algebra I. Eighth grade, we now have time to hit more of those other standards, fractions, measurement, time, and data, that kind of stuff. So, I think, I think I understand what you're saying. So, right now, our time is more heavily focused in algebra, in algebraic concepts. If we can split it up, which we were planning to, then we'll be able to do some more of those fractions and all that kind of stuff that goes in there, yeah.
And then one more thing.
Yep.
You had said there was only three math credits required, and that starts in...
Ninth grade.
Ninth grade. Okay, so that's a little different, because I remember back in the dark ages, um, I did pre-algebra, Algebra I, geometry. I had my three math credits. I didn't do trig, I didn't do calculus. And because math was such a low score for me, I was encouraged not to take a math course to beef up my GPA and do more in sciences and, um, English classes, things like that. Is that still happening, or do all of our students have to take a math every year?
So, I, I mean, with the exception of some specific learning disabilities or something like that, I mean, realistically, the ninth grade would start with Algebra I. So, the pre-algebra isn't gonna count for a credit. Like, Algebra I will be the first credit, then Algebra II and geometry. So, pretty much all the kids will get the minimum of that, okay?
Thank you.
Yep. All right, so, um, keystones. Again, we're just gonna take a little snapshot of this. We know that we administer keystones in Algebra I, in Biology and Literature. And so, we have a three-year span for Algebra I, Bio, and Literature on the, the system right now. Um, different color scheme, so light blue, green, and then that goldish color representing the two, the three levels of the three years. Um, again, when you take a look, just so everybody's aware, for Biology and for Literature, the masses of students take the Keystone in the spring. The winter Keystone, which comes up in December, is the retesters, or the kids that move from other places that we need to have them take the test. So, I, we've reported out the spring scores, because the others are so nominal that it, it doesn't really affect it. Algebra, the way it's currently done, because of our limited time, we don't test the spring of Algebra I. We actually test the December of the year after. Why? Because those kids moved into Algebra II. Gives them a little more time with algebra, okay? We tend to change all of that when we have more time. Um, but the winter is the big assessment window for algebra because of that. However, we've had so many kids we had to retest recently. I combined the winter and spring for those year, years for that algebra, because I just thought it helps to give a little bit more of where we are.
And then will that move to spring? Will the math test move to spring, once you go to the majority of kids taking it?
Yes, yes. So, um, we have to decide if we'll be ready for it next year. If we get our increased minutes instructionally, um, and how that affects ninth grade. Because we're talking about increased minutes in seventh and eighth grade. I gotta figure out if we can do it in ninth. If not, we might have to wait one more year for that. Um, but ideally, the goal is that they'll be in Algebra I, and they're gonna take the Algebra I test that year in, in May. Um, realistically, that's what we should be doing, but we just need to give our kids a fighting chance here. So, and the nice thing is, we go Algebra I, Algebra II, Geometry. Other schools don't always do that. They go Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II. Um, many don't anymore, but it's nice, because they're still working, obviously, with algebraic concepts then. So, um, you'll see there, though, that, you know, we, we had a little drop, quite frankly, across the board last year, 2023. Um, I try to think about why is this the case? Um, probably an assortment of different reasons. Um, we've had inconsistent staffing, um, in, you know, science especially, with other amount of retirements and leaves and resignations. And so, hoping that that firms up a little bit. Um, math, we had a lot of new people. I think we had three new math teachers, um, you know, the year before. So, like, we're, we're, we're trying to, to kind of make sure we get it consistent, not to mention the time and everything else there. Um, literature, again, it's, it's fairly consistent, but, uh, we wanna make sure that we're going, we're reversing the trend upwards instead of downwards there. So, um, a little bit, you, you know, certainly things we have to continue to look at. Um, another piece we have to look at is how are we administering these assessments? Part of what goes on, I can't take the test for the student. The student has to have buy-in. The student has to want to do well. Now, you would expect that, because it's a graduation requirement, it has a, holds a little bit of weight, and that's a carrot. But realistically, our kids know, because they're working with us, there are multiple pathways to graduation. And so, the test isn't the only one. I'm glad we found that, but then also it makes it harder to be a motivating factor for students. And one thing I didn't say with the piece is, we've had a lot of opt-outs. So, you know, some of our, you know, better, um, higher achieving students are opting out. And so, that affects things too. So, there's a boatload of things. Another thing I think we have to look at is how we're administering it. You know, um, true educational assessment research shows, you should replicate the regular day in the class in a testing situation. That doesn't mean put 150 kids in auditorium to take the test. That means take it in a class of 25, like you're normally in a class of 25 in the classroom with, you know, a proctor that you're familiar with, et cetera. So, we have to look at that. It gets to be very difficult when you have, you have to say, AP and keystones all within three weeks of each other. You know, realistically, that's a, that's a challenge. Um, so, we, we have, we have a lot of different angles to look at this, you know, from, and that, those are the conversations that we're, we're starting to have with the building levels as well.
And Dr. Weller, just along those lines, you can see, you know, a different test to Mrs. Taylor's point, maybe the emphasis is instruction. You also compare, maybe these are eighth graders primarily taking the algebra test.
There it was, yes.
And, you know, again, they're not at 100%, but you compare that to the previous screen that you showed with, you know, proficiency. So, you wonder too, is there a buy-in more on one with the graduation requirement? Has word spread a little bit on one that, you know, this is a test that the district measures, but doesn't lead to anything to me individually? You do see a little difference there in the percentage of students who are, you know, showing proficiency on one test and not the other.
Right, right.
So, these algebra kids took it in eighth grade?
Yeah, those are in eighth grade.
And the idea would be going forward, they take it in ninth grade instead?
Well, I, I should say, hang on a second. Um, they take it, Algebra I in eighth, but they're taking it December of, of ninth grade.
Ninth.
And now, eventually, they'll take it in, in, in spring of ninth.
So, we would push it a little further there.
Yeah, and, and spring is more common for the administration anyway, so that's kind of what we would prefer, um, down the road. And just so you're aware, I guess I should share, uh, Algebra, the state average for 21, 22 was 63.9%. So, they're at 65%. Um, Literature was 64.9%. They're at 70%. And Bio was 41.9%. They're at 55%. So, again, you know, we're, we're higher than, but we're not what we want to be, realistically.
Do you have another question? Uh, so, most of these kids then who aren't proficient, are they doing a, they're taking it again, or they're passing in alternate way?
So, um, some of the kids who are close are retesting a second time. I will not put a student in front of a Keystone more than twice. I don't think, I, I don't know what the point is. Um, you know, and so, that's, so we're looking at that very closely. Mrs. Mangle does a wonderful job. We call in kids one-on-one, I mean, she's looking at it. There's also a composite score, so you could... So you could in essence get two basics and a proficient as long as the proficient is high enough and your composite is high enough to pass you. So that, we've had several kids attain the graduation pathway based on the composite scores. And then if neither of those works, there could be a CTC, a concentrator. So they go to the CTC. Then they don't, they don't quite need the score, the passing scores there. Or else they do the evidence or alternative-based pathways. And so now we're looking at a multitude of other needs for them to get that graduation, which has nothing to do with the scores on this, on these tests. And it's interesting because I'm filling out that report for the first time ever. It's due to state now because they have these alternate pathways. So I will be able to, we're just about done with it. I can give you numbers on the percentage of kids who earned it via the true proficient way or the composite way or the CTC way. So I could get those to you and include those in a, you know, Friday. Because I think it's, it's, it's very interesting to see. The majority, you know, we've gotten all of our kids to get, finish a pathway, which is fantastic. And it's, it's not as spread out as you think. We also, they could also graduate under IEP goals and not be any of those. But we, you know, and then waivers, but we have very, very few waivers. I'm not even sure we had one. Because if we have a late enrollee in March or April or senior year, that's really hard to make up. But we've been doing what we can to get them what they need. So I definitely, that's due to the state in late December, but we've got it just about done, so I could share that with you.
So I know with PSSAs, there's the PASA for our special ed students. Is there a special ed version of keystones?
Uh, yeah. But again, that, to me, that would be a student, if he qualified to take the PASA, then they would be graduating under IEP goals more than likely and not, you know.
But do they take the keystone?
They have to be enrolled in a biology. So if I'm an IEP student who wouldn't be taking a biology course, I wouldn't take the bio keystone. Okay? Now, we do have a very general biology course for some kiddos and they do have to take the keystone. But the students that you're referring to in that group wouldn't be taking the majority of these classes, a test, because they're not in that appropriate class, so.
And what about like 504 students who may be able to get extra time on tests during their regular school day? Are they also given extra time on?
They are.
Okay.
Yep, those accommodations are provided.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess now we can move on to the fun stuff that you don't usually hear about is AP, Advanced Placement. And so I thought it would, it's about time we recognize, you know, the efforts of our students and our teachers, you know, who work really hard all year to prepare for these, these tests. And just so you're aware, just as a reminder, you know, Advanced Placement, this is an opportunity for students to potentially earn college credit while in high school through these rigorous courses that are of college rigor. At the conclusion of an AP class in May, the students take an AP test. We do require they take the AP test if they're enrolled in the class. The scores are one to five. If you score a three, four or five, it's considered passing. So we get the scores for our YO students and we also get a global average. We do not get a Pennsylvania average, okay? College Board gives us the global average and they give us our average. Because I know sometimes people say, I wonder how we do compared to other Pennsylvania schools? Can't get that info through the College Board. Threes, again, are passing. They may or may not get you college credit depending upon the school that you reticulate to, right? So some colleges will give three and say, yep, you earned this credit. Others will say, we want a four in this particular class or we want you to earn a five on this test to get college credit. So I can't say that every person who gets a three gets all the credits. However, I can tell you that College Board considers it a passing score. Okay? So you'll see in the next few slides, we have the YO area scores in blue and the global average in red. There are two different charts for each. The first to the left will be the percentage of YO students who scored a three or above compared with the percentage of students globally who scored a three or above. And then to the right of that, you're going to see our average mean score. So if we scored an average, you know, of a 3.65 of all the students who took it compared to globally, was that, you know, 4.2 or was it only a 2.3? So just to kind of give you like the raw score average versus the percentage of students scoring three or above. So we'll start, we also, Scott, thanks so much, Mr. Arns, for helping me out here. He helped me, so we combine by department. So the courses that we teach within the English department that are AP. So AP Language and Comp, AP Literature and Comp. We teach those two courses. So you'll see, and this is where my eyes go. So we have about, close to 85% of our students in YO scored a three or above in Language and Composition compared to only 56% in globally, okay? And then you can see in Lit and Comp, almost 95% of our students who took the test scored a three or above. Now, you might say, well, did they score a three or did they score a five, right? And that's why I think that chart to the right is handy. Because in English Lit and Comp, the average, our average, our mean score was a 4.03. That's really impressive to have a mean score of over a four. So not only did, you know, so it wasn't that they got all threes, all of them got threes. No, a bunch of them got fours and even probably a few fives. So that's very successful there. The next slide shows us, I think, math. So we offer three AP math courses, Calc AB, Calc BC and Statistics. Now, I'm going to say this. Calc BC, it's a small sample size. We don't have a lot of students in that class. But every student who was in that class who took the test scored a three or above for us, okay? And quite frankly, the average mean score is a 4.4 for us. So that's through the roof, alrighty? So, and that's where I go back to Mrs. Webster saying, I still think our highest flyer math kids are succeeding. They're hanging tough. It's just how, you know, what happens below that. So I'm excited to see, you know, the statistics because a lot of colleges require statistics now and not necessarily calc depending on your program. And so our kids are getting some really great experiences and potentially getting some college credit here, you know, based on their AP work. If we take, go along, I think the next one is Science. So we offer AP Bio, Chemistry, Environmental and Physics I. And you'll see, you know, in all but one, we, we had, you know, kind of exceeded the global average, the three plus. And Environmental Science, I believe for us is a newer course. It's been around for several years, but it is a newer AP course.
I'll also say that kids who are taking five or six APs will always just cannot count two of them. They'll study for three and then they don't worry about the other two. They worry about the ones that are important. And so things like Environmental Science probably wouldn't be their top priority to get a three or above.
That's a great, that's a great point. And I think you're right. I absolutely agree with you and I, I wouldn't think it like that, but I, but you're right because in some cases, they might not be going to study that. So that's not, they don't need those credits.
They don't study for all of them who are taking a lot of APs.
Yep.
They also know which ones have a tendency to be easier tests. So like Environmental Science tended to be kids that will only take a one AP would often sign up for Environmental Science. They would sign up for Calc AB, you know, so they.
Right, right. So I think, I think Social Studies is the next one. We have lots of Social Studies at AP courses. We've got AP European History. We have the Microeconomics, the Psychology, the Government, US History and the World History. So that's six courses right there. And, you know, there's no doubt that, you know, the, the World History, they've had a tendency to score very, very highly. I think it's really interesting and a credit to our teacher of AP Psych because that is, there are a lot of students who take that course. So I think he at least has three, if not four, sections of AP Psych. And so we're not talking the small sample size there. We're talking a lot of kids who are taking that and they're, they're very successful with it. So I think that's something that's, that's very exciting and, and kudos to, you know, to that. And I think when school counselors work with students to encourage them to take an AP course, that's often the one that they encourage. And again, so if, if they've only ever taken one AP course their entire high school career and that's the one, we're still really successful with that. We have, you know, over a three point, you know, if I can find it real quickly, 3.68 mean score, which is wonderful.
And all of a class gets to their first year of college, so they can pass at least one class.
Exactly.
And almost everybody has taken that.
Right.
We have some exceptional teachers in the AP topics. I mean, do you guys see that world roll? That 95.5% that's going to be Jay Granti? And he, he is a, he's a scorer for the, like, he works for the. And so he knows how to teach it because he knows how to score it. Like, that's a huge.
And, and that's the piece, I think, you know, our, our teachers have been trained in preparing our students for this test. And, and along with, obviously, they'll work introductionally all year. But that, that's, that's, I believe, where this district is different than many others. We don't have the teachers who are AP scorers. They don't have the, the training that our teachers have had. And so it, it shows with our students' achievement, absolutely. I think the next one is maybe Computer Science. So again, small sample size, but those who are in it did well. And, you know, and a credit, you know, Mr. Minnick and Mr. Miller. They, they teach those two courses and, you know, they get kids who are really excited about Computer Science and, and they do some cool things. And they also prepare them well for, for, for the test. So they do great, great, great work down there. And then I think it's World Languages. So for a long time, we offered AP Spanish only and we just recently added AP French. And so while, you know, our scores are not in AP French what they were in AP Spanish, again, teachers have to learn what is expected and, and, and prepare students for that. And so I think, you know, we'll get there as time goes on. I'm not sure we'll get to 100%, three, three, three or above like we've been able, you know, we, we had this past year in Spanish. But that, that's the key is, you know, as we continue to develop and grow French, it wasn't that long ago that we had a French V and now we have AP French. So like that's, I think that's just a kind of a result of just being a newer course for us and, and more learning as we go. And then I think it's music. Again, Music Theory is a newer course for us. I think it only airs run two years now. And so, and a very small sample size. So we only had a couple of students take Music Theory and that is an extremely challenging AP course, extremely challenging. It's very theoretical, but you also have to perform as well and record and stuff. So it's a combination. And, you know, it, so I think as we get more accustomed to it, you know, I think the exciting piece is we are giving students a chance to experience this who are really into music and potentially may specialize in music in college. It's just getting them that rigor that they're going to need to be successful down the road. And the last thing I think is AP Seminar and Research. So these aren't necessarily content-based, but it's, it's a chance where Seminar is usually a junior class, Research is usually, is a senior class. They learn a lot about, well, reading, writing, creating their opinion, evidence-based arguments in seminar. And then in Research, they choose a year-long project to research. They have to defend it. They create a paper that is about, you know, 5,000 words and they have to do an oral defense with it. So these are two very different courses than other AP courses, which is really neat for kids to help spruce up their writing abilities before college and some of those, and also to incorporate their interests. I think that's neat too because they get to choose individually their project for research. So if I'm into science, but I also want to do some, you know, work on my, my, my informational writing, I can combine my efforts there. And the two courses here, students who finish these two courses and a couple of other AP courses can actually get the Capstone Project AP, which is a special recognition. I think we ran that on social media this year. So that's, that's an opportunity for students to earn as well recognition. So, you know, it's just kind of fun to look at this and, and take a look at and recognize all the hard work and that our students are leaving here with opportunities for, for college credit and that, you know, that they're, they're performing very well while they do so. So kind of wrapping up all of this, I wanted to share with you that, again, I shared with you before, this isn't the end of data. There's a lot more data coming. We're going to get the stuff from the state, but we're also going to be able to take a look at demographic data, how that continues to change when we get the future-ready index posted publicly. The career-ready data that we have to organize, you know, at the fifth, eighth and 11th grade levels. But also our diverse occupations, our internships, those authentic learning experiences, that all builds there. The building scores, that helps us to understand, you know, brings in attendance. It brings in upstairs graduation rates. It brings in our, our achievement, but also our growth. And are we growing kids at least a year for every year they're in school? So all of that will come down the road when the state publishes that shortly. That helps us to compare ourselves with other districts locally and also with similar districts. Again, you've heard me say before, our 7-12 building is unique. We can't just compare ourselves to a building that's only high school because we have seventh and eighth grade. And you see the seventh and eighth grade scores, that kind of skews things. So we, we found five other schools last year that are like seven to 12 for us to, across the state, for us to at least have some similar schools for comparison sake. So we'll continue to do that to see how we are, you know, progressing. So, and then also whether it's the winter or maybe even probably more towards early spring, share, share with you, you know, these are one snapshots of our kids' performance, right? But what our teachers are doing formatively, what our interventionists are doing, what we're looking at with our diagnostics weekly, daily, some of these teachers, that's really what's driving the instruction. So I want to be able to share with you how our teachers are using our district formative assessment more regularly throughout the year. And that helps us to prepare for this kind of snapshot of an assessment. But, you know, data is not just a state test. There's a whole lot of other things that go into it. And I think we're really doing a great job this year honing in and focusing and supporting our teachers with that. So we look forward to be able, being able to share, you know, how our teachers, I'd like to bring in a couple of teachers, how they're using the diagnostic instructionally because it's pretty exciting stuff, so.
Are you talking about CDGs?
That's one formative diagnostic at the high school level and even at, and we use that five and six. But we actually went to an iXL diagnostic, three, four. And they're using iXL diagnostics five, six. And it's incredible what these, what, how it's helping teachers, you know, on a regular.
Because it tracks up here.
It tracks, yeah, oh, absolutely.
Constantly.
Constant, like every week, kids' pathways get updated based on how they're performing in the system. So a teacher, and then a teacher can use that and small group instruction based on exactly what it's telling them. So that's why for me, I can talk about it, but I would love to bring in a couple of teachers and let them share how they're using these tools, you know, daily. So I think that'll be coming down the line.
But when it comes to the keystones, have we heard anything lately? Because they, they wanted to scrap it, but now because of all of the new pathways, are they, are they?
I guess the new, I guess it comes down to administration and who's in there and what's.
I, I don't see the keystones going away anytime soon, but I think because of the alternative pathways, if they were to say, you had to get proficient on these three tests or else you couldn't get a high school diploma, that wasn't going to happen because there would be a large percentage of high school seniors who would not get a diploma because they can't pass the test. So they realized they had to do something different.
So the phasing app has gone away because of the new pathways?
Yeah, I think there'll always be a proficiency pathway, but there'll always be an evidence-based and alternative pathway too. So.
Thank you.
Can I?
You're welcome.
I'll do it quick. Two things. One is, and you don't have to answer now, you want to tell us in January. If there's anything we as a board can do to accelerate the opportunities for more math minutes in seventh and eighth grade? Like, three years sounds like a long time. So if you guys come up with anything that we can support that could move that along?
Instead of an eighth grade, I, I ask my son this all the time because he's really enjoying math again. Thank God for everything that you all have done. They have study hall at the end of the day. Can't we incorporate it with that to some degree?
Yeah, I, I mean, we certainly have some ideas, so, yeah. And, and, and that study hall actually is providing some time for kids to get intervention.
With the math.
And for other things too. So that's, that is a piece where we don't want to ruin that opportunity there besides what happens, you know, after dismissal. Because that's at least built into the day, so we have them. But yeah, we're, we're brainstorming a couple of different ideas and I guess we have some potential.
So don't hesitate, you know, with that being one of our five areas of our strategic plan, don't hesitate to tell us if there's a way we can support that.
Yep.
Right. And then the other is just a question really for you and maybe for later. But I've always thought it'd be very relevant to us if we could see our scores for PSSAs related to other districts in the county. Is that hard to run or can you show us in the future?
So I did pull up, last year I did a, a presentation and I had like five or six, like, you know, roughly same size, roughly same grade level. So once that.
So you can tell me to do that.
Yeah. I, I, it's really hard for me to get 3rd grade this or 4th grade this, but I can get an elementary, which might be 3-4, might be 3-4-5.
What's the tricky part is every school, not every, some school districts have different grade configurations. So it is a little harder to pull it out, but we can, I think, come up to the point of that. This is, come up with a good variety of schools that are similar to us in the grade configuration.
It's just a lot more relevant to me, like, how we do compared to Wilson and Governor Mifflin than the state average. Because the state average is going to have massive schools, like urban schools that don't, I don't really see SSB.
Yeah. That's, like I said, that's kind of what I did. I know I pulled out School Valley, Oley, you know, just because I, you know, I looked at, tried it sometimes, 3-4, 3-4-5, Newburgh. And then at the junior, senior high, we pulled out Tullapahkin, I think Yant T-Dam at the time. Like, anything that was around like a 7 to 12 building. And then a couple out of the county that are 7 and 12. But I'll, certainly we'll do what we can. The hard part is, it's, it's really challenging for me to go down into just one grade level for certain schools because they, they group them according to the entire school. So, but yes, that will be included in the January once the state releases that public, public information.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Woodard, and you and Mrs. Kuhnert in the fall. That's fine with curriculum writing. This is a data, we're going to continue that. Probably you'll see alternating Dr. Linwell, Dr. Woodard kind of coming back and forth and giving updates. So thank you very much. Two quick items still on the agenda. The first one is, I asked Dr. Bab to work with his team this year to think of some additional club opportunities, knowing that, that children in 5th and 6th grade really want to get involved. It's a great time, you know, for students to stay after school. They can do a lot of amazing things. At the same time, you know, many parents are, are working after school. So that additional time that you can be at school participating with things that you like. So this is kind of something new and kind of a little bit expanding on something that, that has been done. So this is the Connect Club. If you're not familiar, Connects are kind of like Legos. You know, there's a, a competition that takes place in the spring. We have had limited numbers of students participate before. We're certainly looking to expand that opportunity. We wrote down that some of the history is that first part. You can see the teacher, Robin Klein, used to do it. We have another teacher interested in Working Werther is Amanda Schop. And this would also allow some of her students that are on GIPs to participate. And you can see that there's, there's teams of students. The, the challenge is really 4-5 to 6-8, but we'd be focusing on that grades 5 and 6 teams. And, you know, you can see it supports, and Dr. Woodard would do a better job than me, explaining the relation probably to the STEM standards. But certainly it's a hands-on opportunity for kids to do a lot of learning, collaboration, cooperation, you know, working as a team. So, you know, we don't know how many kids would want to participate. This number might be way off, but we at least target, you know, 12 to 16 students. If we get a bigger response, we can certainly work through that. If you remember, Art Club there had a very big response. I don't know if some of your children participated when they went through. So I think they had Group A and Group B because they realized it was too many students to have at one time. So I know Dr. Bab and the teachers would get creative if, if we do get a bigger response. But it would take place after school. Now, the competition does take place during the day. So students would get released who are participating to, you know, get out of school with permission and go to that club. Now, this year, being a little later, we, we'd look to start in January if it's approved. But certainly Dr. Bab would like to build on that. Maybe there's an opportunity next year to start it in the fall and let students participate in the club, you know, a little bit longer as well. No real cost, we have the materials. We are recommending a stipend, pretty much an entry-level stipend. I worked with Mr. Boyer. It would be a total of $648, but it would be split among the two, you know, co-advisors. So that'd be $324 each. You know, we could certainly reassess that if 50 or 60 kids want to sign up. You know, I would expect that they'd probably come back to me next year and say, "Mr. Scavoria, the club's a little larger than we expected. You know, could we, you know, merit a different stipend?" But that's similar to the stipends we put in recently with the Debate Club and the Star Club. And I know Mr. Boyer is working with the association right now to kind of go, go through and fine-tune that stipend agreement. So this is Connects. It's kind of not new, but this is an opportunity to really get it out there in front of everybody and see, you know, how many students would be interested in participating in the club. If you go to Olivet, you can certainly participate, just like other clubs. You know, just with parent permission, you'd go over, participate in Connects, and then rejoin the Olivet program as well. So, you know, any student would be eligible. We do offer a late bus. There's another club just approved, and forgive me. Yoga Club. And I, Mrs. Wexler did ask, I did check with Dr. Bab, and yes, we do run a late club, a late bus, so that whether you're a walker or a parent pickup or need a bus, just like we do for this building, you know, all the students can participate and be in the club. So if the board is in agreement, I would put this on the next agenda, which is next week. And that we give Dr. Bab and the teachers a little bit of time to get prepared, get the word out, see how many students are interested, and then, you know, get their teams set up.
Is this something that would be go beyond March? Because you're saying it would start in January and it would be done in March.
Yeah.
And we would be paying a full stipend.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hopeful. I think that was really just the competition. You know, that's when the, I guess you'll go and see where you rank as a team.
But I guess my question is, if it's a club and we're paying a full stipend, is it not a full year club?
Yeah, this year is probably going to be about a half year, so it could extend beyond March. But it won't probably start until January. Our hope next year is maybe, you know, probably not September, but maybe it could start October, November, and run through probably April. I, I don't know how much in May, you know, the club will meet, but I think it could go beyond March and certainly give the, the students an opportunity. So it is a little limited this year just because of timing. But when Art Club didn't run, I asked Dr. Bab to come back with some other clubs that the teachers would like to run. And so far, yes, you know, come back with yoga and this club. So we can make sure that students have opportunities to stay after school and work with their classmates. If there's enough agreement, I can put it on the next agenda. Thank you again. I know many of us have had students at that age or will have students shortly at that age. It is a nice opportunity for, for students to be after school with their, with their friends. One more item, I don't know that anybody on the board finds this as exciting, but this pivot kind of keeps me on my toes with policy. And several times a year, probably about three times a year, we try to update a, a chunk of policies. As you're aware, the board works with PSBA. We have an agreement with them. They provide us with, when there's changes in the law, they kind of work that through. They have a team of lawyers and administrators. And then they project out to the school districts to say, "These are policies you should update." Now, we can certainly update on our own, but the majority of what we update comes through that process. And we have four ready to potentially put on the board agenda, and they're all related around one topic. And the big change in the law was Act 55 of 2022, did mandate to, to districts that they had to update policies relative to home education. Now, home education is homeschooling, not to be confused with cyber school. That, that's a different choice, and you don't lump them together. So these would be families that choose across the state to, to do home education. 137 and 137.1 are current policies with minor recommended changes. It's really just some language changes. In 137, it's mostly about how we work with the group, identify them, collect their materials. Those parents or have to, I know Dr. Woodard knows it well, kind of contribute a portfolio or a summary of the work. So, so really for 137, 137.1, it, there's not a lot of substantive changes. It's, it's really just language changes around what, what came out in Act 55. And I know for the board, if you look at the policies I send you, the bold language is what signifies the new language. So if you get a chance before the next board meeting, if you want to look through, you can see on those two policies, there's just a little bit of old language updated around some of the wording the state's now making mandatory. Now, the other two are new policies. The state did outline that districts have to have 137.2, 137.3, and those are a little bit different. 137.1 was always here. Extracurricular, I'll just use an example, is the soccer team. It's purely an optional activity that you can do or not do after school. So students that were homeschooled always had rights to come in and join, for this example, the soccer team. So again, just minor changes there. Co-curricular would refer to something like the band. So there's a extracurricular component, but there's also a curricular component that takes place during the school day with the grade. This clearly outlines that if a student is homeschooled, not, not cyber schooled, and then they contact Dr. Woodard or the principal and they say, "I will make myself available. I'll transport myself there. I would like to be in the band, not just after school, but I'd like to participate from 11:00 to 11:45 if the band was meeting." They have rights to do that. Now, they have to, you know, tell us who they are. They have to follow the rules that any other registering student, show us, you know, all their paperwork and, and things like that. So it's all the same rules apply, but it just opens it. There's also a component, I know Dr. Woodard knows it better, that students kind of, I think up to a quarter of their day, home education, you can come in for curricular items. So an example would be a parent that approaches and say, "I, I can't teach physics to my child. I'll make them available, I'll get them here. Can you provide for us a class that has an open spot in physics? And if that's meeting from, you know, 1:30 to 2:15," they would be responsible to get themselves here. But it does outline that that's part of what we're required to make available. I know, like, they have some students that will take advantage of this in the next year or so. Some districts have always allowed this, and some districts haven't. So this kind of makes it standard across the state. I know in a previous district where Dr. Woodard and I worked, we had a very large homeschool population. So that was very standard for students to come in for physics or biology and then not be here for the rest of the day. You have a much smaller home education population here. So I think the intent of the state was to make it, you know, consistent for other families. But that kind of goes into 137.2, and it outlines that we would need to work with the families. And then 137.3 is simply the same opportunity. If you want to go to BCTC, in essence, you would be one of our students. So if you live in our district, like, you're home, homeschool or home education, and you say, "I want to be at BCTC," you have to apply like anybody else. You're competitively judged, just like anyone else. And if you're selected to be in one of their programs, you would be in that program. You can get on our busing if you want, but you have to kind of need our busing here. So our bus leaves from here, comes back here, and, and more or less now. In the morning, they could actually get the bus picked up at their house and be brought here. What we don't have to do is create a special run, you know, because of it. But if it goes, if their need coincides with the time of a run, they can also have that, that transportation. So we don't have to create an extra run because, you know, let's say midday when they need to go home, that would be their responsibility. The bus would bring them here. So these four are all related, all about home education, brings us up to the standard. And if the board's okay with these, we would do first reading in November. And then really, I think a new board with a lot of turnover would do the second reading in January. But we'll certainly bring, bring them up to speed and, because it takes, generally speaking, we, we put them on two, two board meetings. Down at the bottom of this summary, those are some others that we are working on just for, for board information. We still have administrators working through those. And we hope to later this year bring some of those policies in front of you for review and potentially a first reading. If you ever have a policy question, feel free, you know, reach out, let me know. We could always make minor changes between first and second reading as well. So just wanted to bring them here to get a few of these moving forward.
And if you'd like to be the policy liaison for up next year, let me know because we've got no putting there.
Absolutely.
Is 220 new or is that something that we're reviewing? Let's do an expression.
I believe that's existing.
Okay.
Yeah, it's existing, just due for an update.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll put those for first reading, and I think that's all that we have.
That's it. Don't forget, we have an executive session following. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I, oh, can I just ask one question in regards to your class sizes? Can I do that?
Sure, we call it.
New business.
Yeah.
So we, at the beginning of the year, well, actually over the summer, we're talking about that sets break quick and how big it is. We haven't really heard any update or anything in regards to that. I'm hearing from a few parents who have kids in that grade that we've gotten new kids in, and it's really kicking the numbers up again. So can we get an update in regards to that?
Absolutely. I think I put one or two in, just breaking down the grade level averages. The last one was probably about a month ago, but I'd be glad to, we can run those numbers again.
Because that was something that we were concerned about moving forward, you know, as to are we going to, are we hitting our numbers or past the numbers for what our policies mean?
I'd gladly, I could put it like in the Friday update and we could sort of, you know, have some more discussion if needed, basically, with the number. Sure.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, have a motion to adjourn? Any second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those need.